Good evening, the West Fargo Planning and Zoning Commission meeting Tuesday, March 9th, 2021. Second order of business is the approval of the minutes from February 9th.
Moved to approve is printed, David Gust.
Say I'll second that, but I did notice the last sentence of the minutes appeared to have just a minor issue. It says Commissioner Dodd and Commissioner Racko seconded it. Probably need to have an S and then maybe Commissioner Dodd's motioned and Commissioner Racko seconded to adjourn.
Noted.
Moved to approve is corrected.
Second as motion.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as published with the one correction on the last sentence. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Passed. Item number three is the public hearing, A21-4, Rivers Bend at the Preserve Seventh Edition, a replot of lots 13 and 14, block three of Rivers Bend at the Preserve Fourth Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, Merco Investments.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Chair, if I could. I just was taking a look at the Zoom and I noted some neighborhood residents from the Nelson Acres subdivision. I did want to point out on the agenda that that is asked to be continued again tonight, so I don't want to waste too much of their time if they're waiting for that. But they certainly have the right to sit in on the meeting. I just wanted to make sure they're aware of that.
Okay, so you're saying the item number seven, A21-1, they've asked that it be continued and we do not act on this? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, and there's nothing to present tonight, but I just wanted to make sure they see that because there's a few items that might be before this. I don't want to take away their night if they don't want to be here, so.
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. Thanks for the clarification and all those listening. We won't be presenting or deciding on anything related to the Nelson Acres Seventh Edition. Correct, right? Okay, so, um. The A21-4, I already talked through the title. I believe this is Malachi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is a pretty straightforward application. The applicant has submitted an application or proposed plat. The replat is necessary for minor lot line adjustments to provide for continued development. The new lots will be required to meet the current zoning district requirements. Basically, the applicant is just proposing to sell an additional 15 feet from his lot to the property owner to the south. The proposed replat does not affect any public easements or right-of-way. And the applicant has stated that it will not affect existing utility connections. Applicable agencies and departments were notified. The only comment that planning received was from engineering, who indicated that there will be city services to properly take care of most, don't believe, the water services to be removed to the corp on the main. The proposed application is consistent with the city plans and ordinances, and it is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. One, utility plan is verified to be unchanged and approved by city engineer. Two, an updated drainage plan is approved by the city engineer. Three, an attorney title opinion to the city of West Fargo is received. Four, assigned a final plat is received with any necessary easements. And five, a certificate is received showing taxes are current.
Thank you, Malachi. This is a public hearing. Right? And so I'd like to open up for public comment if there is any. And if there is none, if you could just tell me, Chanda.
I do not see anyone with their hands raised to speak at this time.
Oh, maybe we should just clarify then also of the folks listening. There is a way to raise your hand by clicking on the, what's the symbol look like?
A hand.
Looks like a hand, go figure. And so if you want to speak, if you click that hand, we can open it up for you to comment if you wish. I'll just give it another minute and a couple more seconds. If there is anybody that wishes to comment, click the hand so we can recognize you. Seeing none, I will close that section then, commissioners.
David Gust moved to approve is presented with the five recommendations, staff.
Jane Laban second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve with the five with conditions. All those in favor?
Excuse me, do we have any opportunity to ask questions or discuss? Okay, I just had a question from Alakai. Were there any property owners that needed to be notified so we didn't, we didn't get any feedback or anything like that from any, anyone who was relevant to this?
I am not sure. Lisa, are you on by any chance?
With replats, we don't notify property owners. There is a public hearing notice published in the forum. If there would have been a rezoning, we would have notified property owners or conditional use permit. But in, in the case of a subdivision or replat, no, property owners are not notified.
Does that answer the question?
It does. I was not aware of that. So apparently there is no, nothing in the ordinance about notification unless it is a rezoning. Is that correct?
Correct.
Hmm, okay.
Or a conditional use permit. There's a number of different items that have a requirement for notifying the public. This is a lot line shift.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's between the two adjacent properties and they've already got a commercial agreement on transfer, right?
Yep.
Do you have any other questions, Lana?
Could I just maybe ask what, what your process, sometimes in a meeting you prefer to have a motion on the floor than a discussion and then a vote? Do you prefer to do the discussion and then the motions and then a vote? Because I wasn't quite sure when to interrupt and bring that up.
Typically, we'll, we'll have the discussion and go through any questions or open items and then we will make a motion and second it for vote. That's how we've been doing it and I'm, we're pretty comfortable with that. Apologize if you didn't feel you had a chance to jump in. Any other questions? Seeing none, then we, it's been moved and seconded to approve as presented by staff with the five condition. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Item number four, so public hearing, A21-5, Eagle Run Plaza, 11th Edition, a replot of lot one and two, block one of Eagle Run Plaza, eighth edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, 25th Street Investments.
I believe. Thank you. This application was received in order to replat property to provide for development within the entertainment mixed-use development. This is the Northern Lights Building that's currently under construction near the fire hall along Cheyenne Street. Replat is necessary for minor lot line adjustments to provide for continued development. The new lots will meet the current zoning district requirements. The applicant is currently finalizing construction of a five-story mixed-use building, which includes a combination of commercial space, multi-family dwellings, structured parking, and building amenity spaces. It is recommended that the city approve the proposed application on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances with recommended conditions of approval as follows. An updated drainage plan is received and approved by the city engineer. An updated utility plan is received and approved by the city engineer. Assigned final plat is received with any necessary easements. An attorney title opinion is received. And a certificate is received showing taxes are current. This is a public hearing.
Thank you, Lisa. So just to be clear, I'm looking at this drawing and the change is this line along the Cheyenne Street and it's a correction of something that was missed when it was?
When we plotted it and included originally the, the fire hall property, there was some issues with right-of-way not being included. And so that plat wasn't, it was recorded, but the plat wasn't accepted. So what they're doing now is splitting the large lot into two lots and adding that right-of-way that was, was missing.
On the Cheyenne wall there and then this, this split here? I don't know if you see that, this is the right here? Okay.
Chairman, if I can, actually the, the replat split those two lots. It's just they forgot to add this little right-of-way clip right here in between when the previous one was approved and when we bought some right-of-way for Cheyenne Street. That piece was picked up and they forgot to add it. I would have preferred a corrective plat, but because of the size or whatever reason, the surveyor didn't feel they could do that, they just have to replat it. So it's really, we've already kind of reviewed this and gone through it. It's a replat to fix it from the right-of-way that we purchased.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Again, this is a public hearing, so I'll open it up for comments from public if there are any. Again, those that are folks that are listening, click on the little hand to be recognized and we'll open it up for, will allow you to be heard.
I have Ian Bowles with their hand up, so I will allow them to speak.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ian Bowles here on behalf of the owners. I just wanted to let you know I'm here to answer any questions should they arise. So, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Any other folks with their hands raised?
I see no one else with their hands raised at this time.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the public, I'll close that section, open it up to commissioners for comments or questions, commissioners.
I'll move to approve is presented with the five conditions, staff conditions. David Gust.
Dodd's will second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve with the five conditions as listed by staff. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number five, public hearing, A21-6. This is a rezoning from P, Public Facilities, to a PUD, a Planned Unit Development of Lot Two, Block One of Elmwood Court, Fourth Edition, City of West Fargo, North Dakota, J and O Investments.
Thank you. This application was received in order to rezone property currently owned by the West Fargo Park District for sale and development purposes. The applicant has submitted an application and preliminary site layout. The property was replatted last summer to allow construction of a service road for access into Elmwood Park on Lot One and to prepare Lot Two for sale and future development. Lot is proposed to be developed as townhomes and will require district standards to consider permitted uses and yard requirements. The applicant proposes a multiple dwelling property, townhome style, with buildings containing no more than eight units per building. The preliminary site plan provides for 36 two-story townhome units in five buildings and four detached garage structures. Access is limited to the property as it is currently, it is adjacent to an arterial roadway. Access is proposed via the West Fargo Park District private roadway, which accesses 19th Avenue West. Engineering and Public Works during discussion on the components of infrastructure and how best to serve the property with essential infrastructure. Notices were sent to property owners within 150 feet and applicable agencies and departments. The engineering department indicated access could be an issue and ideally the park district road should be utilized. They asked the park district about the road being able to handle additional traffic as well as vehicles and equipment during construction of the townhouses. They also indicated the building control line for the Cheyenne River should be adequately marked. Two emails from property owners in the condominium development to the west were received indicating concerns with density and increased traffic. Those emails were included with the agenda packet staff report. An email was received from a property owner to the south concerned with increased traffic type of development proposed that was also included in the staff report. An email was forwarded to you this afternoon from a resident. And this was forwarded to Commissioners Park District and the applicant. They're concerned with the property being sold and rezoned, loss of green space and increased traffic. That two-page letter was forwarded to you and entered into the record. In terms of consistency with a comprehensive plan and other applicable city plans and ordinances, development on the site would not be inconsistent with the G2 suburban growth sector. However, at the time the comprehensive plan was discussed, there was no discussion of this site redeveloping, so it is not mentioned or considered as a developable piece of property. Maintaining compatibility with surrounding uses will provide consistency with city plans and ordinances. Increasing housing opportunities within this area could be considered consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is recommended that the City Planning and Zoning Commission approve the proposed application in concept on the basis that is consistent with city plans and ordinances with the conditions of approval, which would need to be satisfied prior to review of the detailed development plans by the city commission and Planning and Zoning Commission. And those conditions are as follows. Number one, the concerns of adjacent neighborhood are given due consideration. Number two, district standards include provisions to require but not limited to supplementary district regulations, landscaping standards, off-street parking and loading requirements and sign regulations. And number three, consideration of any comments from engineering and public works regarding servicing the property. Now, this is proposed to be rezoned as a planned unit development. So the first step would be reviewing the concept. If it is recommended that the concept is acceptable, then the developer would go on to develop the detailed development plans, which would be site plans, elevation plans, district standards. And that again would be based on public comment, comment from the engineering department. This is a public hearing and I believe there are several individuals that would like to speak this evening.
Thank you, Lisa. And so when you say concept, what we're looking at here is the concept level. And then this would again come before this group for the detailed plans for that approval as, as another milestone. Correct?
Right, the, the concept being residential use.
Residential use.
Proposed, and then they would go on for detailed development plans.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. And with that, I will open it up for public comment again. You got to raise your hand by clicking on the hand. I do also want to just remind folks that we would like to start with your name and your address so we can keep track of this when you're providing your commentary. And Chanda will be opening up to one individual at a time as we go through. I'm, I'm sure there's a few comments coming regarding this.
At this time, we have Mr. Brian Patengale, who's open to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Patengale.
Good evening, Commissioners, this is Brian Patengale with Houston Engineering. I'm representing the owners or the J and O Investments on this property. As presented before you, like I said, it's the preliminary concept sketch. It's very, very preliminary as far as building locations and layouts. Like I said, we're looking at sort of a two-story style, tuck-under garages for the first level with detached garages for the second level, sort of to fit access in there. Maybe looking at eight-unit building, so like four units on the lower levels, four units on the upper levels type of situation. We're sort of basing the PUD on our initial reviews on the R2 zoning classification that West Fargo has. Only real major modification at this point that we're kind of looking at is the rear yard setback. And that's just because of the way the, the funny shape of this lot sort of impacts us with the, the setback on the backside there. We kind of went up with a little weirdness going on there with, because of the, the pie shape of the lot. Basically, it's very preliminary. We haven't developed the looks of the buildings or anything other than just sort of this initial concept. This was provided, you know, sort of short notice with the Parks Department and meeting some application deadlines for the Parks Department requirements, well and with the city of West Fargo's. I'm happy to answer any questions or concepts. Again, like I said, this is very preliminary, super early on, so we don't have a lot of info as far as what the buildings would look like just yet. And again, the standards are to sort of be adjusted as Tim noted or as are noted in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like we have Justin Beam.
Yep, Justin Beam.
Hi.
I live, I live at 315 19th Avenue West, right to the south of the lot in question.
Sure.
We've gone before this board before with the same, when they tried to rezone it about two years ago. And we've lost a view to the south because of Hornbacher's and Holiday. And, you know, we didn't have the control over that one, even though we fought that one. But it's, it's useful to have those two things back there. But the green space across from my house to the north is very valuable to this neighborhood. And having the ability to go across the street and play with my kids and fly a kite and do all those kinds of things, that I know that we are adjacent to Elmwood Park, but the ball diamonds don't provide sufficient green space because those are ballparks and have to be reserved and all that kind of stuff. And green space in urban areas, and especially after this year of rental health and physical health, provides such a benefit to this neighborhood that I would hate to see that goal and be turned into kind of a pandemic itself in the city of more apartment buildings rather than residential homes or something else. Traffic is another concern of mine with more buildings and the park district, their biggest concern is they can't use that lot because of traffic from Cheyenne and they put the service road in last summer with the promise that that would be used just for in and out of the ballparks and be locked at night. And the gates were not used until the park closed in November. And that road does handle more traffic than I think they, I think they estimated. So adding more residents traveling that road and then my median that's in front of you, if you know, if you look at the, the map, that median that is in front of my house in the three houses that border Cheyenne there can get very congested in the morning, can get very congested after work. And I, I can't imagine that being a full-time road to get into residential areas. And this, for, for me, the, the downer is that this totally goes against the West Fargo Park, West Fargo Park District mission statement, that is to provide opportunities for its citizens to enjoy leisure time in public programs, facilities and parks. And for them to get rid of a space that's used by our neighborhood to do that for both physical and mental health is, is quite concerning and alarming. And then I guess my last point would be I implore you to ask to keep this zone the same, but to have them repurpose this area. We understand that, that, that barn and that quonset and that farmhouse is, is not usable anymore. It's old. We understand that. And it was, I believe that land was given to the park district by someone else. They didn't have to buy it. So repurposing that into something the community can use or the neighborhood can use, whether it's another sledding hill or a soccer field or an outdoor rink or a public garden, that's, that would speak a lot to the, the park district, putting their words back into the community about increasing physical and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker we have with their hand up is the West Fargo Park District.
Okay.
Go ahead, jury, able to speak?
I'm showing them still muted.
Okay, there we go. Yes, this is Barbara Stotzer. I'm the executive director of the West Fargo Park District. And good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I am here in support tonight of J and O Real Estate and just to, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, it came up on mute again, so, okay. I am here tonight in support of J and O Real Estate and our ongoing discussions of, of planning with them. And just very briefly, I know there's probably other people that would like to talk, but I'd just like to state that we've been working on this probably since about 2018 and really more formally since 2019. We've been in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple times and, and the City Commission a couple times. And we've, we've actually, we've stepped back a bit. We've held a couple of public meetings. We've done some things that at the beginning, we were just planning on selling the whole thing, but we took a look at the property and as your last commenter had stated, you know, we looked at this property and we thought, you know, how can we work with the public more? And I guess, you know, when I look at this, when we acquired this property in 2002, and I think the discussion more tonight is about the zoning. I think we've had a lot of these discussions already, but I just kind of want to reiterate that lots of things have changed about West Fargo. A lot of things have changed about West Fargo, Cheyenne Street, who thought we would have a Hornbacher's, Gateway Hornbacher's in this area? So there's been a lot of things that have come up and a lot of good things that have come up that we have all been impacted by, and that's life. Sometimes life does change. And I think what we've done is we've tried to accommodate the citizens the absolute best we can. The property on the corner to us, we lost our access on Cheyenne Street in 2019 when the Cheyenne Street project came through. And as I mentioned, we, we were before the commission a couple different times and we reworked this. We put this road into South Elmwood Park and we still had the idea that we were going to sell the triangular piece of property that you see on the map. But we also are retaining property on the northeast corner of that as well, too. And we, you know, we've got some preliminary plans to put a bike path in there and to have some riverbank frontage there that we're pretty proud of that we can connect into Elmwood Park. The other thing too is I know the question came up is what's the park district going to do with this, with the money from the sale of the property? And I think that's an excellent question. We've, we've got, when we met with the citizens in the two public meetings, we talked about playground equipment that we're putting in. We're looking at that here in the future. We've done quite a bit of work on the paths in South Elmwood Park. We've got a big renovation project that we're looking at North Elmwood Park that really is going to get started this fall and, and head into 2003 Maplewood Park. I could go on and on with a lot of projects, but you know, we're very concerned about having those improvements from those, and those dollars and improvements go together and be on the north side of town. But I don't think, I, I just want to say too that, you know, in our planning process too, with that road coming through South Elmwood Park, we realized that that probably would be access into that property. So that's not something that, you know, we've, we've really ever held back. We've planted a lot of trees and I- We've planted a lot of trees and I think what J and O is got proposed so far is very, very good concept. Like I said, we're still at that concept stage and yeah, I I appreciate any input and comeback. Comments that anybody would have on this and we would be happy to entertain those questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I do not see any additional hands raised at this time.
Okay. I'll wait a. Moment or two more. If there are anybody else that wishes to comment, please raise your hand so we can recognize you.
Uh, we have Drew Welton, who is now open to speak.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and thank you to the commission for pulling this meeting. Couple of points that I guess that I'd like to make right off the bat are. Don't really think that people in this community are fully against a development. I think. The density of what has been proposed is causing a lot of concern. At least from the folks that I've been talking to around here. And maybe shame on us because we're not all here in full force to bombard your airwaves, but. I I think, uh, you know, I'm gonna. Just go out and say, you know, Barb, thank you for coming on here to show. The park district cares and Justin from. Just down the street from me, I'm at three thirty nine nineteenth Avenue. Brian from Houston, thank you for coming on here and being open to taking questions. I don't know is that anybody has any questions of that a development's going to happen, but I, you know, I I want to stress the concern is the correct development. Does need to happen for this community. Traffic has been a big concern. I know that there's a lot of people that have asked me questions about the particular deed that goes with this property. Maybe somebody else can answer the question of was the land. Given with stipulations of not being able to put up for various types of developments that I wasn't able to confirm. And I think for just political reasons for this, this whole kind of neighborhood of of Elmwood Park. This particular development with detached garages, I I just don't think it. It works. So I I do I do encourage, strongly encourage another. Concept to be provided. The the density and the the access and and all those things are major points that of anybody that I've talked to.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Welton.
We now have Carol with her with their hand raised. Go ahead, Carol, you can unmute and speak.
Yes, my name is Carol Aberdalfie and I live at four twelve F in the townhomes. And one of my questions is, is this developer planning on these being sold units or rented? Because they're adjacent to, you know, the Elmwood Townhomes and our bylaws say that every unit has to be. Resided by a resident, an owner, if we can't rent out our spaces. And that would be one of the concerns that plus the number of garages that would be butted up against that road. Not that, I mean, granted, we all sort of knew that eventually something would happen there. But for that drive into the park to be the backside of a line of garages. Just doesn't seem to fit the neighborhood. You know, the the deck density, the number of people. You know, if you take that times at least half of those people having two cars, that's an awful lot of vehicles coming out onto that narrow road. At a time of day and summertime, which you're going to have. Baseball softball, things going on in the park. And there's that divider there as. Brian was not Brian, Justin was saying, you know, that creates an issue with those people even getting out on their street in the first place. And there's only one entrance. It would seem to me that development with that many. Residents in it would require. From the fire department to have a second entrance. I mean, our development has three. And you're looking at almost the same amount of. Units as we have. That just seems like a lot of vehicles in a very short space. And then back to my question, is he planning on this being a. Units that are sold or rented?
Mr. Chairman. I would ask, I've answered this question a number of times in these similar. Applications that ask for city attorneys available to. Comment on our ability to restrict owner occupied versus rental.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, Mr. Chair and. Tim, we, as a city, we don't regulate whether units are rented or owned. And we don't have any ordinances in place that allow that. And then and around the country, some ordinances that have some cities have tried that and they've been overruled. Uh, so currently that's not within our jurisdiction to regulate whether it's. Owner occupied or rental units.
So that is something that is only strictly done as a covenant for a specific development at the developer level.
Correct.
I would also strongly urge the planning commission and our city commission to not consider that part of their. Discussion nor part of their deliberation on ruling in favor or in or in opposition to these applications.
Duly noted. Thank you for the clarification. Ma'am, do you wish to continue?
It was just one of those questions. I know ours is a an H O A and that's one of the reasons why we can get by with that, I guess. But it does, it does affect the neighborhood if it is rental versus sold. Just a comment concern. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll wait a few more moments if there's any other. Folks that would at least like to comment. Chanda, is anybody else raising their hand?
Do not see any additional hands raised.
Okay, thank you. So seeing no further comment, I'll close that section. Of the discussion. And open it up. Commissioners.
I got a few questions and comments, I guess. Number one, this property, from what I understand and what I see, is only going to have one access point, correct? And that has to be through that park. Park road. And because of that, is there any limitation on the number of units or? Does that limit the access? Does the accessibility limit what you can do on that property? Is is as proposed, is that within the limits? I I know there's concerns about the neighborhood about how many. Units can be within that that given property.
That's maybe, is that an engineering question?
I I I guess Commissioner Thorstad and maybe to a couple of the public comments, is is that really a traffic question? Are you concerned on? What density might be allowed in that that?
Yeah, I think just what impact that whatever, and I know right now we're looking at concept, we're not looking at final plans, but. Is that a consideration that should be taken by staff? As this progresses. Maybe don't have the answer now. It's just a comment. The other comment is, and I know again, that's been stressed, it's a concept, but. As designed, seems to me like it's just a downsized apartment complex. Standalone garages, people living on two different levels. And, you know, they talk about townhomes. I guess when I think townhomes, I think like across the street, Beaver Creek and. And down by Aurora, there's the Montgomery Homestead, which are they're put their wood down there, they're. They don't have standalone garages. I just think the garages make it appear, it just appears like it's a two story apartment building versus a three story. And I think when. When they come with plans down the road, I guess personally, I would like rather see something that. Looks more congruent to the properties to the west and the ones kitty corner over in Beaver Creek. And I know Beaver Creek has a few little standalone garages, but they're single and double garages. They're not. They're not rows of garages. So that's that's just a a a comment to that point. And I guess the last comment I'd make, I I understand, you know, neighbors. Wanting green space. I mean, we all love green space and all that stuff, but really. And and there's been some. In the letters, you know, I think people hoping that for whatever reason, us and or the city commission will. Will will stop it and 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 keep it green space. I'm just gonna say personally, I don't think that's our position. I think our position is to. To address it as it's presented to us, you know, and. We've got elected park board who's vetted this for some time. And that's their decision. That they're gonna not continue it as a park area, so. I guess. Everyone can certainly vote the way they want to, but I guess personally, I don't. Don't feel I'm going to stand in the way of. Any development just to keep it green space because I I personally don't think that's my decision as a planning and zoning commissioner to to make. I think that's why we have elected park board people. And of course, I'll go to the city commission, those are elected officials as well that will. Make the final determination. So that's just my two bits. Thanks.
Thank you.
Chair, on that first part, that's the P U D is really the process that you guys can weigh in on on the style and. You know, garage units, things like that. So those are great comments and apologize again for my sternness on rental versus owner occupied, just very careful to protect our. City from.
Yeah.
In the Fair Housing Act realm and. So.
Good. Keep us honest. That's good.
Uh, David Gus, my concerns are with, you know, the basically a private park district road. You know, who's going to pave it? Who's going to maintain it? Who's going to plow it? And, you know, I kind of share.
Uh-oh, I think he lost bandwidth. All right, we'll wait. Until Commissioner Gus gets back online, we'll. As any other.
See, while while we wait for Commissioner Gus to unfreeze. I guess I would share a lot of the comments that Commissioner Thorstad mentioned. I thought those were great comments about the. Sort of look and feel and appearance, you know, back row garages, all that sort of stuff. If we have an opportunity through the P U D to influence that, I think we should definitely take that opportunity in this situation. I'm also kind of curious about the access, assuming as this moves forward. Will have an opportunity for police, fire, public safety to weigh in on accessibility and and. You know, those aspects that they would do as the plan gets more. Firmed up and I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, but tonight I believe the. Action in front of us is the rezoning. Request, and if I understand right, then subsequent steps would be for the the plan to. Materialize a bit further where we would have more opportunities to weigh in. And, you know, perhaps provide some additional comments or edits on the proposal, if that's correct.
Yeah, we're not going to be zoning this. R two or R one specifically, but P U D for the for. Because of the uniqueness of the space, I believe, is one of the reasons why we're going in that direction. Because it does have some unique characteristics. Commissioner Gus, you're back. So we lost you there for a minute. We kept going.
Yeah, I don't know what happened. I'm on Big Sky, so maybe it was something on the mountain. Yeah, and I understand that Commissioner Dodd's comments, I caught most of them. But I just want to make sure we're in front of all our concerns so they can address them before they do come with further. For the plans and I I would like to, you know, personally see a commitment from the park district. For a path along the river there that allows these residences all along here. To gain access to Elmwood Park, you know, certainly if they can't use the ball diamonds for flying kites. You know, let's get them simple access through a bike path or whatever to get to Elmwood Park to do it. I mean, I think that then that would, you know, I think it'd be a good effort on the park district to do something like that.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, Mr. Patengale has his hand up to to speak again.
Uh, you, why not? Mr. Patengale is from the developer, I believe, J and O.
That's correct, Commissioners. I just want to just answer some questions as far as that goes. Yes, we will be working with the city staff as far as we do. We have access for the city staff and fire and for emergency access and things like that. We already are working with the park district as far as access along their existing road. We're already sort of discussing easements. And agreements between that for use, obviously, as part of those easement agreement discussions, we can sort of. Iron out who is responsible for maintenance and plowing and stuff and that kind of aspect of it, since it is going to be a shared use type of thing. So like I said, those those concerns are, we are aware of those concerns and we're kind of already starting to work with the Parks Department to address some of that stuff and city staff. They said this this is squares on a on a map. Right now it's squares on a map, so it's not hard. It's hard to envision what this stuff is going to look like. I mean, like you actually said, this is just sort of. We know we want to go residential. We know roughly how many units the developer would like to place out there. And so it's sort of the initial first stab at this. So yes, there is much refinement to be done on this.
Mr. Chair, we also have the West Fargo Park District who would like to speak again.
Please.
Uh, Barbara Stotzer again here. I just want to back up what Mr. Patengale had stated. That is absolutely correct. And I also wanted just to clarify there, too, that we do have a path. That goes in from nineteenth Avenue into Elmwood Park, the path that I was talking about putting in. Up in that northeast corner, that would be a very small kind of eyebrow in there. We would. We are looking at putting a path in there, but yes, we do have connectivity with a bike path. Um, in fact, we've kind of made some accommodations, so you really. It it's particular to cross, having to cross the road. On one direction, so you don't have to cross it more than once. So just wanted to make that clarification. Thank you.
For for my, just so I'm clear on it, so you are planning on putting some sort of a path along that. The riverside where you're maintaining some of that property.
Yep, and you can see the path in the. Just off of that ball diamond that. Kind of runs runs angular there, we would connect up to that, but there's a path off of nineteenth. On the west side of the property and then correct on the northeast side of the property. Our plan, once the construction and everything is done, we would like to put a small connection connector in that area along the river.
And vacating some of those silo structures and things like that along there, is that part of that?
Yes, that's all of those buildings are going to be tore down.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, and and. You know, it what's come up a couple of times in the conversations and hopefully I'm not out of. Speaking out of turn here, but it, you know, it's the density is is is. Certainly, one of the the functions or the. Things of concern by all those involved and. As stated earlier, the concept was based on applying R two. Levels of density and structures. Eight units or less. And. Uh, I think Commissioner Thorstad said it, well, is that the right one? I mean, because that, you know. It's it's not. Doesn't necessarily have that feel of townhomes and things like that, which is associated with. R one A or I don't know. I I I forget the right ones. Help me out, Tim. Malachi, Lisa.
Yeah, our two district could house townhomes. It's just it also can house. A lot of different types of buildings. I think what Commissioner. Thorst that was referring to is match up with the neighborhood feel a little bit better. There's not a lot of strings of garage units in this.
Yeah, yeah. And. And that it that is important for the neighbors and I think is also. Relatively important as far as. in that, that it's important for the neighbors and I think is also, um, relatively important as far as, making sure it's consistent with the overall plan and that the, uh, neighborhood, uh, which I think is one of our, um, charters is to try to drive compatibility, I think is the right word for it.
Yes, Manaraco. Um, we, we've heard about the issue of density and of access, and of, um, really what kind of benefits might the, the neighborhood accrue from this rather than a detriment. And this, it does seem to me, this is the stage for us to say that I, I think we could kick it down the road to the detailed plan, but, I've just seen a case where that didn't work and they come back with the detailed plan and then you're stuck with the detailed plan. And it's pretty hard at that point to, uh, say, no, that's too many or no, the access isn't right. So it seems to me at this point, we should make some stipulations if we feel there should be some, or at least, um, stipulate how, uh, decisions might be derived. Uh, I didn't hear anything about working with the neighbors in the neighborhood. Seems to me that, that, some of them have given up quite a bit already with property south of them at the Hornbuckers. So what, um, how is it that this would do no harm for those people? And achieve something that is a compromise perhaps? And I, I've heard, what I heard was that they were willing to compromise. So do we, can we consider whether the, uh, number is reduced, should be reduced to be more compatible? Whether the access, um, needs to be resolved? Uh, what it is, what benefit, whether it's green space, not looking at garages, et cetera, that would be helpful for the neighborhood. And I would urge that any detailed plan coming back needs to have an architect, a detailed architectural plan and a detailed timeline, which has been absent from details, detailed plans coming from other P U Ds in the past. So I'd like to maybe get us on the right path with this one, which is a concern already to, to, uh, people in the neighborhood. Can we do some of those things?
Um, certainly, uh, we can put in anything we approve or don't approve, um, reasons why and or, uh, conditions, um, along with the recommendations. I think, um, some of that is or is in the recommendations from staff with the, the concerns, of adjacent neighborhoods are given due consideration. And I think it's just a matter of interpreting, what does that mean? Does that mean, input at an earlier phase than, um, as, uh, you'd mentioned in other, uh, P U Ds or, um, uh, on the density, uh, piece, um, you know, I'm, I'm not sure. Um, I, I'm not sure what our, um, w- w- how we should approach that piece. I'm struggling a little bit and it has to do with, um, you know, uh, partly what we were talking about before, uh, regarding rental versus ownership. That's not something, we tend to weight in. So I'm not sure how the, uh, density piece can be treated. Yes, Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Density of the proposed development is about thirteen and a half units per acre. Um, in our past comprehensive plan, we did actually discuss density in different housing types. Uh, in our current comprehensive plan, we do not. However, uh, just, we tended to rely on that when talking about density. The density thresholds there were, um, uh, ten units per acre on, uh, low density. What we typically find is, um, a really low density development, like such as the Wilds in West Fargo is around three to four. Some of the higher densities, um, you might find where there's maybe narrower lots, those tend to be five to six. So we don't usually achieve that ten units per acre in a low density. Um, the medium density tends to be ten to about sixteen units per acre. And the high density is up around twenty or so units per acre. And those are, you know, the multi-level apartment buildings. So density isn't, uh, a great concern. However, the unique circumstances of this, access might, uh, make it a little bit more, uh, complex than that. Because you're coming right onto a road that's full of all low density right at an intersection. So, um, I think you'd probably rely a little bit on our traffic engineers to determine how that might come out. Um, multifamily developments usually have less, uh, tra- less of a traffic count than a single family. Uh, a single family usually has more residents in their home that might be using cars. Uh, whereas multifamily, each unit has less per unit, but the total density kinda raises that up. So we could put those numbers in and, and try to figure out what kinda impact that might make to this road. And that's something that we would do in reviewing detailed development plans. But, um, the, again, the, the type of housing, the, how it fits into the neighborhood, those are all things that I think are good to, weigh in on and, and give the applicant some advice as to how to deal with that.
Tim, when you say, um, advice on, on type of housing or, or can you give us some suggestions of what you mean by, that kind of advice and what some of the alternatives might be?
Sure. Um, and so I'm, in, in my mind, uh, and I always say this to people that call, and this is why we do this is, you know, what is it that you feel your neighborhood has? And what, what's so important about your neighborhood? What does the neighborhood feel? Um, and, and in my mind, you look around and, 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 and how's, like a home builder can probably pick up on those cues pretty easily. We're not in the business of having architectural standards in our community. We've never done that. Um, we do talk about housing types on our corridors, but are building, construction types on our corridors, but not housing types. Uh, we did visual present, uh, preference surveys in our comprehensive plan. And we have a lot of e- examples of that that we could provide to them. Um, what we found in, in that, uh, exercise was that people don't like the large garage structures. Um, so that was something that we found out from the public that they don't like. But again, neighborhood by neighborhood, it could be different. And so I think that's why we simply put in concerns of adjacent neighborhood are given due consideration. We hope to find from the neighborhood when we reach out to them, what's really important to them on issues like that, that we can actually address. Um, and I think here, uh, I think the garage units is, is something that people are having an issue with. And if I could maybe glean from some of the comments on renter versus owner occupied, like I've stated, we can't really deal with. Maybe it's not so much whether or not somebody owns or rents it, but how it looks and does it look like an apartment building versus does it look like, something that fits into the fabric of the neighborhood. And that would be very consistent with our, uh, visual preference surveys where people looked at, buildings that look like what we typically find in our suburban areas, apartment buildings. Put it next to a fourplex or even a tenplex that looked more like a house or a townhome. And they really picked that, place that looked like a house or a townhome. And I know this builder's built properties like that. And Commissioner Thorsted referenced those in a couple of different areas in town. So I, I feel like if we give them that direction, they'll be able to come back with something that is, uh, a little bit more acceptable to the neighborhood. But without seeing that, it's hard for me to tell you exactly what.
So are you, would it be a good idea then for us to ask the developer to meet with the, the neighborhood? So they can have that kind of input, get a sense of what it is, how they see that, what kind of, uh, you know, whether it's some green space or something that would be a benefit to them. So they're not simply losing, but they may be gaining something. So it's, so it's at least a, as much a win-win as we can get. Um, rather than doing harm, which is kind of what I'm hearing, that if you do it this way, it could be harmful, but there could be some things that modify it that make it more, um, acceptable or an improvement of some kind. So I would like to propose that we, that the developer meet with the neighborhood and get input about the, that design. Get some discussion about what would be some improvements, um, whether, you know, there's some green space in there, what that path might be. Uh, and that we, um, again, direct that we come, that they come back with a detailed, um, architectural plan in a timeframe so that the neighborhood has a, a real sense of what things would be looking like.
I think we can add those things depending on, um, uh, what recommendations we wanna add to, any approval, if that's the direction we're going. Any other commissioners wanna weigh in and?
Hey, I would, this is Dodd's here. I, I would, uh, share a lot of those comments that, uh, Commissioner Racco just mentioned. I think those are great things. My comments earlier about, you know, what was in front of us tonight weren't intended to, suppress any comments or recommendations about, you know, how we want the P U D. I was just trying to make sure I was understanding what was in front of us here. And I think bringing this back with more details, I, I like the idea. We've had a lot of community input, uh, both in the packet, and throughout the day today. Um, so it's, it's definitely ripe for, the developer to be meeting and sort of engaging with the, the area property owners. I think those are all good steps that I'd fully support. One just follow-up question. The condos directly west of this area, they've been there for a while and it seems like my, my sense is they fit in with the neighborhood. Just from a tangible question, i- i- is something like that, um, more suitable for the neighborhood and something that people can see and visualize and not suggesting we replicate it, but just kinda from a concept level. If that's more suitable, um, perhaps that's gives the developer and the, the neighborhood something to think about.
Does that imply that there might be fewer units then? I'm not quite sure if, if it's only a visual look to it and architectural style, or if you're also suggesting that there be fewer units.
I'm not suggesting one way or the other. I guess I, I think, um, those are all things that I guess I'd, encourage the developer to meet with the property owners and talk about. I, obviously the developer probably wants to maximize the, return on his investment here. Um, but there's impacts from access and traffic and, you know, so that we need to find a balance, I guess, and all that.
I don't have the density of the other properties. Um, my hunch is that the density of both, uh, Beaver Creek and the Elmwood, uh, Court, uh, Twin Homes here look to be relatively dense. I'd say they're over ten units per acre, more than likely. Um, so, but we can, we can come up with that. Again, I'm not all that concerned with density, other than how it might impact traffic and, and, and that specific lot. We can look at that.
And that is something that, um, will be looked at as far as access, um, and, uh, the traffic study. I mean, if, like we've mentioned, that's come up a couple of times, is that one road gonna be enough for X number of units, whatever that is?
So looking back at the, I don't know if we're ready yet, but it's just looking back at the recommendations in the staff report. Um, it kinda seems to me that we maybe wanna go a little bit further than what's stated in number one. Recommendation number one is concerns of adjacent neighborhood are given due consideration. I think we may wanna sort of require, uh, uh, you know, meeting with the neighborhood, um, along with that recommendation. Um, I think number two talks about, items that we would fully support. And number three gets into the engineering public works, which would, which would address the traffic and access issues.
Is it, is that a proposal?
I was throwing it out there to see what kind of fish.
Kinda throwing the fishing line out if anybody bites.
If that was, if that was a motion, I'd second it.
I'll make it a motion then to amend the, uh, to, to approve, as recommended with a modification to the first recommendation, such that the developer meets with and gives strong consideration to neighborhood considerations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposal, with the three recommendations, first one being modified to include direct, uh, input from the, um, neighboring properties. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, those opposed, same sign. Motion passed. All right. Sorry, again, give me a second here. I gotta catch up where I'm at. We're on item number six. It's a public hearing. A twenty-one dash seven zoning ordinance amendment to sections four dash four, three, four, of the DMU, the dis- uh, the downtown mixed use and four dash four, three, five, the entertainment mixed use district.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we had a opportunity to spend a little bit of time with consultants that, I've, uh, had a good deal of respect for on, uh, urbanism principles and what, uh, the concept of our comprehensive plan really surrounds around. And, uh, had him look at our two districts that would meet up with those principles, kind of the basics for, why we came up with those two zit districts. And they did a little audit and, uh, looked at how they can be better, both for developers and for meeting the goals of the city. And, um, I have a very small staff report here. But I did a, attach, um, what was really just kinda their general review audit of them. And, um, primarily they felt we did a really good job of meeting the goals of the comprehensive plan. The recommendations that they have were kind of intended to, you know, protect us a little bit legally and, and, uh, make sure that we have enforceable standards. But also to provide, uh, more clear and predictable, uh, outcomes for developers as they're looking at developing downtown or in this entertainment mixed use district, having, um, very clear, um, regulations that they can take and then, draw up their site plans and come in and get a building permit. So, uh, primarily, I think just, getting more clear and objective on the standards, um, getting rid of illustrations. Uh, they said the illustrations can, uh, be a little bit inappropriate in a regulation, like we put them in there. So they're proposing we should put those in more of a, uh, guideline. And so I'm gonna work on guidelines that match up with these districts and, and have those kinda to hand out as, uh, somebody might wanna see what this, what we're trying to get across in our regulations. So we're gonna do that. In our standards, they do have some recommendations on dealing with non-conforming uses. I don't wanna get that into this. I'm gonna rather prefer to work with our city attorney to work with our non-conforming, uses and structures ordinances and try to, uh, put that into that section. So we don't have it pieced all throughout the ordinances. They did encourage us to, um, get rid of the part where we say that, uh, everything should be in mixed use. Uh, what that creates is the inability to, to do housing downtown. And housing's an important thing to have in a downtown or in any district. Uh, so it, we, they're worried that we might miss out on some opportunities on that. So we removed the word mixed use in, uh, one of our sections. Uh, site design standards, um, giving some leeway to the zero foot setback, and adding these tables that have, um, abilities to increase a setback if you have, if you're making use of that space through public art or ways that people can interact with the street. In the building construction standards, they talked about removing the requirement of seventy percent glass and turning that down to fifty percent. They did use a retail expert in coming up with that determination, finding that, um, merchandising, uh, booth space, things like that, or restaurants, makes it really difficult to have a whole lot of glass sometimes. So sparing that down a bit. They do have a recommendation for, um, parking and I, you know, I, I, I'm not ready to, to jump on that quite yet, especially in the entertainment mixed use district. Um, I think that we should, uh, spend a little bit more time on that. So I didn't propose any changes to that at this time. And that is about it. Uh, Joe did, you had a question for me today, um, regarding the illustrations, in the, uh, the district standards that I have. I did leave in, um, that, uh, part in the parking areas where we show an illustration for parking lot screening. You know, the more I thought about that, Joe, I think I, we should take that out. So I'm gonna need to make an amendment to four dash four, three, four point four, point one, point E, um, where I'm just gonna have to remove some language in there that refers to that exhibit. So I can do that, um, in between any, uh, comments you guys have. So I can do that um in between any uh comments you guys have and and city commissions, so.
Four dash four, three, four point four, point one, E.
Yeah. So, um, not major changes. I think these are all good changes that are uh more. Uh, legally defensible and uh more. Clear and predictable for developers. So with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Uh, so clarification, you mentioned guidelines that you still want to create? So that'll be a secondary thing that we'll see or?
Um, I can just uh show them to you as information. They wouldn't be regulatory. They'd be really just illustrations that would. Uh, be helpful for developers as they use this as their guidebook.
So that's like a supporting document, not the regulation?
Yeah, just, you know, the kind of grocery type thing we would put on our website, so people understand what we're trying to put across and all these words.
And uh, uh, you you're asking that we vote to approve these changes. With the modifications to the stated, the previously stated uh illustration removal. Um. Okay.
A public hearing is scheduled. It is a ordinance amendment, so.
This is a public hearing. Okay, got it. So it is a public hearing. With that, I'd like to open for comment. Uh, if there's anybody that wishes to comment, uh, please raise your hand and we'll recognize you. Feel like we need some music when we're waiting. Like uh Jeopardy, right? Janda, is anybody raising their hand?
We do not have anyone with their hands raised at this time.
Okay, very good. Seeing no comment to close that section, commissioners, any questions, concerns, issues, complaints?
I have a. A couple of questions here. Um, Tim, I guess I'm looking at the the recommendations from the consultant. And I I think they mirrored in your recommended changes, but. On page six of their recommendations, it's under recommendation five, item four. Talks about on the glass, this is talking about the glass fronts. Tinette mirrored and reflective glass and glass covered by screening sheets, white or UV protection film are prohibited. Okay, um, not to pick on them, but right now, if you drive by the VFW, their whole front has got perforated graphics on them. Which are advertising, but and I don't know if I want to inhibit businesses from uh being able to advertise, but. On the other hand, I think those perforated graphics are more of a long-term uh application right now. They advertise different beer or whatever they do. Um, how how would you handle that under this ordinance? Because as written, I would assume that they're they're out of compliance. None of the businesses have done that as well. They'll put a something in their window to advertise the sales or whatever. Is that something that could be? Permitted or or? Were they even allowed to do it for a certain time limit or?
Yeah, um, I didn't incorporate those into the ordinance amendments.
I think I see it in there.
It's in their proposal you got on page six, you said?
Yeah, it's in there. And if I go to yours, it's under.
I I think I might have copied that. I'm sorry. Yep, I have it on uh four dash. Four three, four point four point two. Um.
The ordinance under item two, building construction, it's item number four.
Yep, I need to take that off. I'm sorry. I did not intend to put that one on there and I need to cut that off because it it. I think that would interfere a little bit with our sign code. Um, and we need to take a second look at that together. Um, that's kind of industry um around here. They typically are tinting windows and. And most people say you shouldn't do that because then you can't see what's going on inside the building and it sort of takes away that feel to connect to the street. But it's just not something I really wanted to take uh to jump at right now, so I would. Actually, probably ask then in any motion that you remove that right now until we deal with that in our sign code.
So that's under two building construction, A.
Four. Apologize for that. I was doing some cutting and.
Question I have is uh within their recommendations, they talked about the use of the sidewalk and making it a little easier for businesses to use that. Um, but they mentioned in there by doing that, you know, if they want to put out. You know, a retail shop wants to put stuff on, as long as they keep a clear path. But it says to do that, the uses are permitted by right without the need of application and. And with the Chamber of Commerce holding liability insurance for the district and. And naming the city as an additional insurer for negligent acts associated with the use of sidewalk. Okay, uh, I don't know if that i- is going to be just allowed in practice or if that's going to be part of the ordinance changes, but. Um, if so, is it the downtown business district or whoever the business district that would uh. Hold that liability insurance and and um naming city as an additional insurer to. Within their recommendation there, how would we implement that? I don't think it's a bad idea to allow the businesses to utilize the sidewalk. But if if that is a indeed a possible concern is how would we, how would we address that in practice in most Fargo?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of research to do on, you know, Fargo will be a good example of what they've done in their business improvement district. Uh, I think we have a lot of growth before we can get to that. Of course, you know, we don't have. I don't think the Fargo Morehead, West Fargo Chamber of Commerce would be interested in holding liability insurance on our downtown. Um, and we'd have to seriously prop up our current yards business association to get them in a position where they could do that as well, so. But it is something I think uh that we should talk about in terms of our upcoming street project. And um our public works department is got some ideas for how better to. Uh, maintain this new project when it comes through, but we got a lot to learn, so.
Say, Tim. You you might find that there's um some conflict on state routes as well with state rules. The way this is written right now.
Are you referring to Main Avenue, Commissioner Walker?
Um, actually to any, yeah, any of your state routes that you might have, Main Avenue was is one. I know. Um, when we were exploring the ability to be more flexible, you know, a- as a Fargo staff person. Um, we did run into conflict with the state.
And um Giant Street has uh, we we did receive federal funding for the project, so it does affect a little bit of what we can do with the right of way. We've not had much pushback on. Some pretty unique proposals for that project, so.
So.
Little bit.
Does that affect the wording or the changes? Um.
They had some sig- some suggestions. Um, that we we took into account for signage. Um. What we have is um. Under three dash A, let's see, it's um four dash four three four point four. Point three dash A, we require an encroachment agreement. And we've done that for a couple of signs that encroach in the airspace, I guess, above the right of way. Um, and we've we've. Had our attorney write those up and uh signed them with the commission and the applicant in those cases. I think what this document states is um again, to try to be a little bit more. Um. Predictable, they offer that we would put them in there with this process and and we didn't, we didn't do that right now. Um, we didn't change that. We're not proposing to change how we do it. Um. It's not really ready for, ready to jump into the sign code quite yet.
All right, so this proposal does not affect that area?
No, but I like, I like their proposal and their comments. It's just, I don't think we're there yet. I don't think we have a. A ability to take care of that liability right now, so that's why we do the encroachment agreements and have our attorney review those on a case by case basis. I don't think it's too burdensome to go through that process for procuring sign at this point.
Sure.
Someday.
Any other comments? So we had two specific things that we were recommending, changing from what was uh put in the report. Um. I'd accept the motion.
Well, I'd make the motion, but I don't remember what the two points were, so if somebody else can add the points and move, we accept with the uh, those two.
Let me help.
Please.
Two, the two areas are um a modification of four dash four three four point four. One E to exclude the illustration and the removal of. Four dash four three four point four point two. A four, the removal of that entire. Statement. Those were the two that I noted.
So move. I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve, to approve the um zoning ordinance amendment changes. Uh, with the two modifications that I'm not going to repeat. All those in favor? Say aye. Any opposed, same sign? Motion passed. Uh, item number seven, we're going to just continue?
They've asked to continue it again.
Uh, commissioners, anybody have issue with us allowing them to continue? Is this the second time we've continued?
Yep.
Um. Okay. Or is it the third? This one's been here for a little bit.
Uh, tabled and then it was continued that last month's meeting and they've asked it to be continued again.
All right, if nobody's opposed, we'll just continue. We don't have to take a a vote on that, do we? Um, all right, so item number eight, a discussion. We have a time conflict with the Board of Equalization for April Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Um, I spoke with Tim about this earlier, that if we do this as a Zoom meeting, there is no conflict, so we can keep it at the same time. Uh, is that correct?
Yes.
So uh, if nobody is opposed, we'll just do another month Zoom. That way we don't have to move the time. And then, you know, we'll plan on starting in person in the May. Sony, um unless there's of course uh some sort of changes and or we have um anybody as opposed to that. Uh, because I I think we have to do kind of a little bit all or none. Uh, uh, to make it, you know, function. I don't think it's easy to do where we have several of us in person and some of us Zoom, so.
I will say I didn't get any emails or comments from anybody that was opposed to having it in person, but I will take them again if anybody, if anybody changes their mind and I'll. Just discreetly let the chairman know that we'd like to do Zoom.
And uh, so just next month, we'll do again Zoom just to make it convenient and we don't have to change the time. And the Board of Equalization can meet and use that conference room, I guess that's the. What they're going to be doing. Okay, uh, nine, non-agenda. Are there any other non-agenda items?
Um, we, uh, I took a new position at the city. I'm doing double duty though. Um, we have a advertisement for a new director of planning and zoning, so. Um, I will still.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So you're gonna ditch us, aren't you? Okay.
I'll still be here. I my, I will have.
Well, we got Malachi and Lisa now, so.
Yeah.
We're good.
I'll have oversight over planning, so I'll still be here.
All right, I ask a question about that. First off, congratulations, Tim. That's excellent. Um, will Planning and Zoning Commission have any kind of representation on a uh search committee?
Um, you know, if if they have, if anybody has an interest in uh being part of the interview committee, I certainly take the email for interest in that. It'll be hired by our city administrator. It's not an appointed position. Um, so the commission, uh, we haven't really talked about it yet to find out who wants to be on an interview committee, so if you, if someone is interested. Please reach out to me and I'll pass it on to the mayor and the city administrator. So thank you.
I think the mayor just heard it, so. All right. Last item is adjournment. I'll take a motion.
Yes.
Anybody else? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone. We're good.